I'll go ahead and open the line.
Are you ready?
I'll give the disclaimer.
You're good to go?
Um, she's gonna go ahead and start the beginning part and then you can start. Go right ahead.
And once I open the line, they'll be able to hear you over the music, so I just wanna make sure.
Yes, you're free to go ahead and open the line.
Okay. Welcome and thank you for standing by. At this time, all participants are in a listening-only mode into the question-and-answer session of today's conference. At that time, you may press star one on your phone to ask a question. I would now like to turn the conference over to Nicole Willwright. Thank you. You may begin.
All right, Chair, you may begin.
Okay. I'm gonna open the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for Tuesday, July 14th, 2020, at six... six... oh five? Well, I'm looking at you, cuz you got the clock.
Oh, I'm sorry. Six oh five, yes.
Okay, at six oh five, we open the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, and I will call us more at that time. Please, roll call, please.
Commissioner St. Martin? Not present at this time. Commissioner Smith? Can you unmute and say here? Sorry, we just have to get into the record.
He's signaling that he's...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kalindres?
Here.
Vice Chairman Stevens?
Present.
Chairman Tinker?
Here. Okay, at this time, we're gonna stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm gonna ask Patrick Stevens, Commissioner Stevens, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please.
Right, please stand. Hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the Five of the United Americans and to the Republic and One Nation indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna look at... approval of the minutes from the last meeting, which would have been... the June meeting?
Yes, sir, June 9th.
It'd been June 9th? Okay, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the June 9th meeting.
Here I am.
Okay, Paul. Okay, we're gonna do like we did before. I'm gonna call on you individually at random so that everybody's not talking at one time. So Nathan?
Okay.
Nathan?
Go move.
Okay, I have a motion. I need a second. I need a second to approve the minutes from the June 9th meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion from Nathan, a second from Commissioner Stevens.
Commissioner St. Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Kalindres?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Stevens?
Yes.
Chairman Tinker?
Yes. Okay, do we have any conflict of interest on this project tonight? Commissioner Stevens?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Nope.
Commissioner, uh, where are these guys at? Uh, St. Martin?
No.
And Commissioner Kalindres?
No.
Okay. A couple of statements I wanna make before we get into this thing. You'll notice that I'm not wearing a mask. I'm socially distanced from all members of the staff by many, many feet. I can't breathe with a mask on, but there's no problem. The staff is well away from me by fifteen or twenty feet, so there's no problem there. IT is fifty feet away from me, so we're okay. We're complying with the orders to be safe. The other thing that I will do, and like in the past in the meetings, is when I ask, or I'm gonna look for comment, I will call you by name and ask you for a comment. This will allow us to do this in an orderly fashion. I will not follow any specific pattern, but this way, we can make it go along and handle it in a very professional manner, okay? Now... public comment period. Due to circumstances, we encourage in members of the public to maintain participation in our meetings by submitting a public comments via email or by teleconferencing in a phone-in comments. Please see the front of the agenda for the specific directions. Now, I'm gonna give you the... if you need to email in your comments, you need, you email it to nicolew@beaumontca.gov, and that will go right to our city clerk. Are there any requests to speak?
I have no emailed comments, but I will go to the phone line to see if we have any speakers. Operator, do we have any speakers that wish to speak at this time?
Thank you. We will now begin the question-and-answer session. If you would like to ask a question, please press star one, unmute your phone, and record your name clearly.
Okay, we have no speakers then.
Just a minute.
Wait a minute.
At this time.
No speakers at this time?
No speakers at this time.
Thank you.
Okay, and we've already approved the minutes for June 9th, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
There is one speaker in queue. One moment, please.
We have one speaker in the queue.
Okay, we're hanging on for one speaker here.
Um, the person's name is Ryan.
Okay, go ahead.
The line is open.
Oh, the, uh, is this public comments?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Mr. Roy, this is public comment. We have you, um, open and ready to speak on the mic.
Okay. I will be commenting for the item on the Beaumont Landing Project, but if a, uh, member of the Planning Commission isn't able to wear a mask, I suggest they call in remotely, uh, so that they can maintain it. They have a medical condition, they can, you know, accommodate their medical condition without, you know, breathing on everybody else and spreading the COVID virus, which they say now can go easily over twenty feet in some circumstances, especially in a confined space with meetings that last over fifteen minutes. So that's something I'd like to ask the Planning Commission to consider for the next meeting. Anybody has a medical condition, don't be in the building. Call via Zoom or remotely. Thank you. That's, I do wanna comment for the, uh, the Beaumont Landing. So I'm just gonna be quiet for a minute. Is this the time to do it? Would you like me to wait?
Well, first of all, who are we speaking to?
This is Ron Roy.
Mr. Roy, we'll have a public comment period on item two. So if you want, we can put you back on the holding pattern, and then when it's time to speak for that, you can do your comments then.
Okay, that sounds great. I appreciate it. If you would please put me on hold until item, uh, agenda item two.
Will do.
That would be great.
Okay, so now, we're gonna move to... we're gonna move to Agenda Item Two. Conditional use permit CUP 2018-0021 and plot plan PP 2018-0119 to construct and operate a gas station with nine fuel pumps, a sixty-seven-hundred-square-foot canopy, a thirty-eight-hundred-square-foot convenience store with off-site general license, off-site sales with general license type 20 for the sale of beer and wine, and an attached fifteen-hundred-square-foot car wash and a standalone four-thousand-square-foot drive-through restaurant on a proposed 3.03-acre site located on the north side of Desert Lawn Drive, east of Oak Valley Village, and west of I-10 freeway. And the community is commercially zoned and adopted an ad hoc mega, an adoption of a mitigated negative declaration. And at this point in time, I am gonna ask for staff's report.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Carol Kendrick, presenting the Beaumont Landing Project. This is an application for a conditional use permit and plot plan for the proposed gas station, convenience store with alcohol sales, a car wash, and a quick-service restaurant with a drive-through. And the application was submitted to the city on July 5th, 2018. This application was submitted by the applicant and is not a city-sponsored project. Public notice was also placed on the press enterprise, and property owners within three hundred feet were notified of the public hearing. Two online comments have been received to date that will be read into the record that raise concerns related to traffic and future freeway improvements. The Beaumont Municipal Code allows gas stations, convenience stores with alcohol sales, car washes, and drive-through uses in the community commercial zones subject to a conditional use permit. The property is zoned community commercial, and it has a general plan land use designation of, um, community commercial as well. The surrounding properties have the same zoning and land use designation with the exception of an industrial manufacturing designation to the south. The parcels surrounding the subject property are currently vacant. The subject site is 3.03 acres. Uh, it is vacant, and it does have an existing asphalt curb currently. The project does include two commercial retail buildings with a total square footage of ninety-three hundred square feet to be constructed in two phases. The AMPM convenience store is thirty-eight-hundred square feet and does propose to sell beer and wine, and there is a fifteen-hundred-square-foot attached car wash tunnel to the rear of the convenience store. The gas station will be a ARCO, uh, fueling station that will have nine pumps with eighteen fueling positions that will be underneath a sixty-seven-hundred-square-foot canopy. And then, as Phase Two, the four-thousand-square-foot drive-through restaurant, which has not, uh, a tenant has not been identified at this time. A traffic impact analysis was prepared by LSA associates for the project, and the project does propose two driveways on the realigned desert line, Desert Lawn Drive, both with full movements. The traffic analysis indicated that the implementation of the recommended improvements that require the project to install a signal at Desert Lawn and Oak Valley Parkway and payment of tump and road and bridge fees will satisfy the impacts to the, uh, traffic and will, it will have them operating at a satisfactory level of service where currently it's unsatisfactory. Because this is an applicant-sponsored project, they will be responsible for paying for their fair share and/or constructing required improvements. The project as proposed requires a minimum of fifty-nine parking spaces. The applicant is proposing sixty. That does not include the eighteen fueling, uh, positions that are underneath the canopy. The gas station, convenience store, and car wash are proposing a twenty-four-hour operation. As I mentioned previously, the restaurant has not been identified, therefore, we don't have operational characteristics at this time. The property is also located within Census Track 438.22, and it allows one off-sale license based on the population ratios. Currently, there are two, which include the Beaumont Service Station and the Fisherman's Retreat located in Calamasa. Therefore, the alcohol beverage control, also known as ABC, will require a convenience and necessity determination for the proposed type 20 off-sale license for beer and wine. ABC typically looks at the proximity to sensitive receptors that include schools, parks, and places of worship. The separation requirement is six hundred feet. The project is located over two-hundred-and-fifty feet from the Shadow Creek Park. It's seventy-five-hundred feet from the Fellowship in the Past Church and forty-seven-hundred feet from the Three Rings Ranch Elementary School. The applicant has also provided a letter that demonstrates the justification for the PCN, which is Attachment H to Your Staff Report. The project is also located, uh, has a portion that's located within the Multispecies Habitat Conservation Plan criteria cell and was required to complete a joint project review with the Riverside Conservation Authority and the Wildlife Agencies. On February 6th, 2020, the joint project review was found consistent with the plan subject to mitigation that is included in the mitigated negative declaration for the project. The draft initial study and mitigated negative declaration were circulated for a thirty-day public review period from June 10th to July 10th. Staff received four comment letters, one from Riverside County Flood Control and Water Conservation District, the Rincon Band of Lysennial Indians, and the Riverside Transit Agency. Those three letters either had no comment or just had basic information. We also did receive a letter from South Coaster Quality Management District that asked for some clarification in the initial study mitigated document, which the applicant has updated. Also, engineering staff has requested a modification to condition number seventy-five that replaces the language northbound left-turn lane with the language dedicated right-turn lane, and then at the end of the condition, or as approved by the city engineer. So I wanna point out that the Beaumont Municipal Code states that the Planning Commission is empowered to grant and deny plot plan and conditional use permit applications for projects and to impose reasonable conditions upon granting of such permits. The required CUP and plot plan findings can be adequately met or included in the staff report. So at this time, staff would like to recommend that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing and adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project, approve the modified conditions of approval, and direct staff to have the applicant record a notice of determination with the county clerk. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm now gonna go to Commissioners, and, uh, if you have any questions, and I'm gonna start with Commissioner Stevens.
Yeah, um, I think my questions are more for, um, perhaps the applicants, um, rather than staff, but I can ask them, and maybe you guys can determine.
Well, I can open a public hearing in a little bit, and we'll have the applicant up there.
Okay, yeah, I guess we can wait till the applicant.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Smith?
Uh, yeah, I had some questions that I had asked, uh, staff at the end of last week for some clarifications on relating to Oak Valley Parkway and the interchange project as well. I think, you know, there's some, um, talk about public comment on that. Uh, wanting to ensure that there is consistency in planning between, uh, you know, what the initial kind of rough design of the, uh, the Oak Valley Parkway interchange looks like to line up, continual lineup with Desert Lawn Drive. Uh, you know, Desert Lawn Drive's not going anywhere since there are other uses further down the way, so any interchange improvement have to take that into account. Uh, you know, staff was able to provide a exhibit that overlaid the two to show that the future ramps that are from the freeway are lining up with the, with Desert Lawn Drive in the ultimate condition. Um, and then, you know, the, the existing ramp location would be kind of a right turn only onto the freeway at that point, so that the traffic signal, that third traffic signal would be removed. At such a point that there is funding to build that. That was my primary concern. Uh, second item that I had on there that was brought up for review at the city engineer's discretion also was that there is the exhibit that showed there's two through lanes. There's a, uh, a combo left through lane, and then it immediately kind of drops back down. Uh, my suggestion was to make that a left-turn-only lane, but then leave the receiving lane, uh, on there with the re-striping on, um, Oak Valley Parkway as well. And, uh, those are my, my primary concerns with this. Uh, everything else seems in order and consistent with the zoning and land use. So those are my comments on the plan.
Text message from, from S.T. Moxley.
Did you get his comments? Nathan's?
Yes, he emailed his comments to staff last week.
All right, so I'm gonna go to Paul, Commissioner St. Martin?
Yeah, I got most of my questions answered, uh, in the presentation. Uh, the one left is the RV storage at the end of Desert Lawn Drive. Is that going to impact the, uh, the use of that facility?
No, it will not impact the use of the facility. The project is proposing to realign Desert Lawn, but it will, um, still provide access to the, the business that's located to the, to the, to the east.
Did you, did you copy that? Paul, did you get that?
Yeah, I copied.
Okay.
Yeah, I did. Uh, the other two that I was gonna ask was that wildlife part of it. You did answer that question. It has been, uh, taken into consideration in the EIR?
Yes, the, uh, the applicant did go through the joint project review through the Conservation Authority and with all the Wildlife Agencies, and, and they can probably attest that it was, it took quite a bit of time to, to do that, but there has been mitigation that's been incorporated into the mitigated neg dac that they comply with. Um, they are also conserving, uh, 0.35 acres to help maintain the linkage, uh, for that area as well.
Yeah, now what happens if Noble Creek floods?
Well, Paul, Noble Creek...
Noble Creek, Noble Creek passes right through that.
Yeah, I, I think we can, we'll, I've, I've, I've mentioned that to the developer today, but we'll bring it up in it when he comes on board. Uh, I went out this...
Okay.
I went out this afternoon and looked at that, so I think we have a pretty good answer, but I'll wait till he comes on board with it.
Okay, uh, that's all I have.
Commissioner Kalindres?
Uh, my question was about the traffic as well, the impact that's gonna have to that, uh, the off-ramp. And then, uh, is, so the first phase is to the, the gas station, the car wash, and the convenience store, and then they're gonna submit second plans for the restaurant, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, are you, uh...
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna open this up unless the Commissioners have another any questions. I'm gonna go to a public hearing, and then don't, remember, we can still get these questions answered. So at this point in time, what...
Would you like to open at six twenty-seven?
I will open the public hearing at six twenty-seven. At this point in time, we'll, um, are there any requests to speak? And I know that Mr. Roy has a request to speak.
Yes, I have two written comments that I'd like to read into the record, and then I'll go to the, to the phone line.
Okay, we have two comments, written comments that are gonna be written in the record.
First one is from Diana H. She says, "As a Beaumont resident living in Solera Development, I would like to express my unhappiness with this proposal. We already, we are already overwhelmed with new developments in this immediate area. Oak Valley Parkway off-ramp is already too busy and awkwardly timed. Building something this huge will not benefit us. It will just be, bring more congestion. Please think long and hard before voting yes. I do not believe local residents will be for this." Next comment is from Elaine Morgan. She states, "My concern with this project is traffic control, specifically the upcoming expansion of the Oak Valley Parkway overcrossing as well as the I-10 on and off ramps. The plans for these two critical improvements to the traffic flow on Oak Valley Parkway have not yet been completed. The allowance for this project to move ahead should not be considered until those plans and the land use required have been determined. The traffic flow on Oak Valley Parkway under certain, I'm sorry, under current conditions is heavily impacted by commuter traffic in the mornings and evenings, not to mention the added traffic when schools are letting out in mid-afternoons. The additional traffic that would be drawn from commuters going east on I-10 would be heavily overwhelmed in the existing roadway. I can only imagine what the traffic load will be during the Coachella concerts and vacationers heading to the desert areas during the spring and summer months. The Commission has already approved a project much like this one on the corner of Golf Club, Golf Club Drive and Oak Valley Parkway that will drive additional traffic in the opposite direction. Please consider the impact to our existing communities that surround these potential projects that even an additional stoplight at Desert Lawn Drive and Oak Valley Parkway will not provide enough relief for. I have been a proponent of growth within our city and welcome incoming businesses, but stuffing a project like this on a sliver of land between the I-10 east on-ramp and the railway easement is an irresponsible use of land with a detrimental impact to our residential communities." And I received one more written comment just now. And this one is from Edward Neary. He states, "At which point will the Planning Commission consider that a gas station will impact traffic in such a negative way, causing a backup issue such as we see during rush hour traffic on the east and west ten exits of Beaumont Avenue and Oak Valley Parkway? The Oak Valley overpass improvement is not enough to facilitate the proposed gas station. Traffic will stay in the area and not move away from the overpass as it does now. As of now, traffic has been more manageable but not sufficient to facilitate newly developed or developing housing communities. A one-lane each-way sucks on Oak Valley Parkway overpass. Bad timing there, especially knowing the developments such as this item and others in the future. 2020 might be the year that Noble Creek floods, but haven't seen much in the past eighteen years. In closing, great idea to bring some more to the city, bad idea to do it in that place until mitigation of traffic is considered." Um, that's all I have for written comments. Operator, do we have anybody on the line that would like to speak?
If you would like to ask a question, please press star one. Unmute your phone and record your name clearly. There are currently no questions in queue at this time.
Okay, we had Mr. Ron Roy that was wanting, he did call in.
All right, maybe we just give it just a minute.
Ron Roy, if you would like to ask a question, please press star one. One moment, please.
It does take them a minute. They have to record their name, and then it comes up, so we may just have to give it just a minute.
Ron Roy, your line is open.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, um, I'm requesting that this project is not considered for approval until the following is answered with confirmation and to the satisfaction of residents. Uh, first of all, how much land will the state need to build the planned upgraded Oak Valley interchange under design alternatives, including what I'd like to see, which is a devoting diamond interchange? And how will this affect the project site? It's cheaper to condemn land when it's vacant versus spending millions of taxpayers' dollars to condemn a built-out site with a ARCO station and a convenience store, et cetera. The next element is that the, uh, traffic analysis demonstrating the impact, I would like to see this. Uh, the traffic, a traffic analysis that demonstrating the impact on Beaumont Landing Project on, and the first element is that the 2018 traffic impact analysis is out of date and does not reflect current traffic conditions of recent and future growth. Uh, next, the traffic study needs to determine existing contract, uh, traffic conditions during peak and off peak hours, uh, also on the surrounding housing developments, both existing and future. Also, BUSD students to use the interchange in the morning and in the afternoon, uh, the Oak Valley Shopping Center north of the project, the storage solution, storage facility on Desert Lawn, the future urban village planned south of Oak Valley Parkway, which will be west of the I-10 SR-60 interchange. The next element is what I call right-of-way issues, and it consolidates in with what I've just said, but, um, uh, so... Uh, first is, uh, how much land, again, right now, I think there's three lanes for the I-10. Uh, they may need to go up to four or more lanes, and decide to make it eight to ten lanes. So how much land are they gonna need to expand existing I-10? Also, there's, uh, in the state planning, the upgrade of the I-10 SR-60 interchange. And so, to what extent, whether that initial, additional land for the interchange, which is only a mile or so away from the overpass, affect the Oak Valley overpass project? And then also, um, that was mentioned by some of the Commissioners, where's the proposal for upgrading Noble Creek, a bridge at Desert Lawn Drive on this project? Uh, also, real quick, someone suggested that the ARCO station would be built north of the freeway. Also, for me, another really important point, given the conversion from fossil fuels, why isn't the city requiring charging stations and other alternative... and other alternative fuel stations incorporated into this project so that we can be a frontline community of change versus reactive? Also, the impact on the Union Pacific Railroad right-of-way regarding their future commercial and passenger rail considerations? So in, you know, summary, this proposed conditional use permit must be within the lens of the city's long-term planning needs for the future interchanges and retail residential and other growth in the area. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Okay, do I have any other-
There are currently no further questions in queue at this time.
Oh, by the way, I'll submit this on the record, too. Thank you.
Okay, we have, the public hearing is open, and I'm going to go to the commissioners right now to ask any questions, and which they may. You okay with that?
That's fine.
Okay, I'm going to start with Commissioner St. Martin. Paul, we have the developer here. So if you have questions-
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I share quite a few of the same concerns that were mentioned there. I am concerned about the traffic backup because that's, Noble Creek is so close to the entrance, or the, yeah, the entrance ramp, exit and entrance ramps. How are we going to manage that traffic? There's only, if I recall, a single lane, once you get through the last stoplight, you only have a single lane until you get out onto Oak Valley Parkway, then it widens. How are you going to control that turn?
Are we talking about the Noble Creek Park, Paul?
Say again?
Well, you're talking about Noble Creek. I'm trying to figure out where you're talking about here.
No, my concerns are similar to what was presented earlier. I did have a question about the flooding at Noble Creek. What happens in an event of a flood?
Okay, I'm going to let the developer answer that.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Ash. I'm part of the development team. I've been involved in the entitlements from over about three and a half years ago when we initially looked at this project and to this stage. I have other members of my team as well. I have our traffic engineer from LSA who's available. I have our two civil engineers. I have our architect, and I have a couple of our environmental consultants as well that are all on standby on Zoom to help answer questions as well. Commissioner, your question with regard to flooding of the creek, so our elevations are going to, you know, we're going to be much more elevated than the current grade. I can definitely have our engineer give some more details as to, either the city engineer or engineer, as to the exact elevations, if you'd like. But we're confident that based on the elevations, we would be prepared if there was any increased water or flooding in that area. Hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I'd like that to be brought to the planning department.
Okay, so noted that the planning department will work with the developer and the city engineers. And I believe that San Timoteo Creek, that's the major flood there. So it's noted, and Paul, they'll address that issue.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I'm going to ask Commissioner Smith.
I would like to hear some more about just the traffic. There's a lot of community concerns, there's been a lot of chatter about that. So, you know, if, there's discussion to that effect. You know, one thing, you know, there was talk about the site being elevated. The applicant mentioned that, you know, if you look at the plot plans available right now in the creek, they're at an elevation of 24.6 feet. This site plan is proposed at an elevation of 24.78, so it's about 18 feet above where the creek is right now. So, you know, that, based on what they have on here, it appears that this would remove the occupied portions of the project from the flood plain for protection on that. But I am curious about traffic. This is a very tight intersection. You know, we have had problems here for a while that have been partially resolved, I think, by the installation of the traffic signals. And it is a ways off from when the ultimate interchange is going to be built. So I'm just looking for some additional backup information.
Sure, thank you for that input, Commissioner Smith, with regard to the elevations. So as far as traffic, we prepared an entire traffic impact analysis in its entirety, and it was reviewed by the city's third-party consultant and approved. We took into consideration all of the, you know, uses that were mentioned, including the drive-through fast food at 4,000 feet. And with all the, you know, the movements that were to occur off the driveways on Desert Lawn as well as Oak Valley with the dedicated right-turn lane as well as a left-turn lane, which would go westbound, a left-turn westbound lane. You know, normally when we do these studies, and I have my engineer as well who can get into a little bit more details, but we take into consideration future counts, because I know that was a comment, I think I heard from, a city comment that I heard from, somewhere from the community, they were concerned about the date of the traffic study. So, yeah, this was updated May of 2020, the traffic impact analysis. So that's the most up-to-date version. We take, you know, future counts into consideration as well whenever we do these types of projects, as far as when we anticipate opening, so their opening date counts. And those were all taken into consideration as well because we anticipate that in the future, you know, growth, there would be more trips, and that was all taken into consideration. As far as the alignment or timing, I think we did overlays with the future interchange alignment, and there was no concern as far as how the alignment actually fits with our proposed project. In fact, because of some of the elevations that we're proposing for the grade, it would actually probably benefit Caltrans and the city in any future development. There would not have to be, you know, any kind of, you know, the types of retaining walls that there may have needed to be in the future for the 10 eastbound on-ramp. And again, the signalization would be relocated. I think that was mentioned somewhere as well. If you would like details as far as the specific counts, the trip generations, I can definitely have our traffic engineer chime in on that as well.
Couple, couple points of that. I think that the request is going to be distinct, boy, I'm talking, my apologies. The request can be always more around the traffic signal and how that's going to operate in such close proximity to the signal that's on the ramps right now. I do see, again, on the plot plan, that you are providing additional right-of-way setback. It looks like you're allowing for about 100 feet from the center line of the road up to where your property would begin. You know, all said and told, if that dedication is matched on the north side, that's 200-foot wide right-of-way for road improvements, which is substantial. And there is a note on there that your Caltrans encroachment permits be obtained prior to construction. So that's my second question at this point, is have you been in contact with Caltrans about that? I assume they're going to have some stricter guidance about oversight and future compatibility with the interchange as well.
Sure, George, did you want to see if you can answer? I'm going to defer that to my civil engineer, who I know has kind of been tackling this.
Sure, so this is, yeah, George Linveste with Proactive Engineering Consultants. The additional right-of-way that's needed along Desert Lawn, or excuse me, Oak Valley Parkway, from the on-ramps back to Desert Lawn, that was determined based on a study that was prepared and the city provided for the new right-of-way dedication that's required along Oak Valley Parkway. So we are adhering to the new right-of-way that's being requested at this time based on, I think it was alternate B that the city provided for us. And then, there is actually no additional right-of-way dedication that's needed along the Caltrans right-of-way. So our boundary along the Caltrans right-of-way is the existing right-of-way. And the encroachment permit we need with Caltrans is basically to extend some fill onto their property. But as Ash was mentioning, where, and I think was, I think was made apparent on an earlier comment, that we are raising the grade of the site and bringing up the existing site approximately 15 feet. And so we are extending our grading onto Caltrans property, and that's what we need an encroachment permit for, which we will, we haven't started that process yet. It's kind of getting the cart before the horse to go to them with a encroachment permit when we don't have an approval yet from the city. But now that we're in that position, we will go to Caltrans and get that started. And again, by raising the grade as much as we are, we are eliminating the need for a retaining wall that was identified on that study. So they should be in favor of us, you know, grading onto the property because it does eliminate a very long, expensive region that was proposed as part of their improvement.
And then, traffic signal operations, how is that envisioned?
The traffic, well, the traffic consultant can speak more to this, but the extension of Desert Lawn, the access for our property is the, it's in line with the future alignment for the off-ramp of I-10 onto Oak Valley Parkway. So our intersection becomes the new intersection, the new alignment of the off-ramp for Desert Lawn, or excuse me, for Oak Valley Parkway. And so it's actually, it's an ultimate signal that will stay in place. The signal that will go away in the future is the signal for the existing ramps because those ramps, the ramp that, ramp configuration that's proposed is a partial cloverleaf. So the on-ramp for Desert Lawn will become a loop-on as you're getting, as you're entering eastbound on I-10, you'll be looping onto it.
Okay, let me hold a second. I want our city's principal engineer here to discuss this also. So jump in here on this.
Sure, hi, this is Robert Vestal, Principal Engineer for the City of Beaumont. I'd just like to add some background information. We do have two CIP projects. One of those has been commonly referred to as the ramps for Oak Valley. There are several alternatives for that ramp system. And as the engineer stated, we are predominantly moving forward with the partial cloverleaf. And obviously, that's based on funding. It's not going to happen within a year or two, but it is in the queue that we are working towards. So that'll widen the overpass, and then, as the other engineer described, construct some ramps, really enhancing this area in terms of traffic. Now, a much shorter-term project that we have in the works is a TUMF. What is that? Is a TUMF settlement agreement where we, the city, have to have a CIP project to widen Oak Valley Parkway. And that's going to occur pretty much where the ramps end and then down to the northern part of Desert Lawn. So in the short term, within a year or so, Oak Valley is going to be widened in addition to this project, the improvements that are slated for this project.
Okay, and widen up to the ramps.
Nathan, does that give you some answers here, bud?
That gives me a lot of answers. I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, we're going to go back to the developer. Now, thank you, sir. Commissioner Stevens, any comments, questions, or concerns?
Yes, I had one that, you know, came up. And I don't know if it's for the developer or maybe staff to answer, but it was really reflective, what that caller came in on was electric recharging stations. You know, down over on Second Street now, we have 20 new stations. And then over in the Kohl's parking lot is 23 stations, or three stations for a total of 23. And then I was looking at our neighbors to the east that have significant charging stations. You know, Cabazon has 24 stations. So I just think, you know, is there a way, you know, I know that, you know, ARCO is coming in there, but, you know, is there a way that we can require, you know, some sort of a ratio of 1 to 10, you know, 10 regular petroleum pumps to one electric pump? You know, just to not only capture some of that market, but to also, you know, encourage more of that green, you know, technology and conserving the environment, that sort of thing.
You know, I'm a little jealous because I had a note on here to talk about those EV stations, and now you've taken my thunder, so.
Well, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you understood his question?
Yes, I did. So it's definitely a great question. It's a pretty heavy question in some regards. I know as far as parking stalls that have charging stations, there, you know, oftentimes new developments, and I would have to try to get the city building code, there are a certain number that, you know, they can allot. I don't want to misspeak, but I believe for a project this size, it's at least two charging stations, but I would have to check the city code on that. So these would be parking stalls that would have EV charging ports, essentially. But the reason I say it may be somewhat of a heavy question, and kind of like you tied it in, Commissioner, to the community concern or question, was, you know, actual charging stations in the sense of, instead of, you know, pumping gas, they would be charging at a stall. So that, if that's kind of the concept that's been presented or, you know, brought up, you know, that is something that is, you know, slated down the line. I think it's, you know, there's a lot of, you know, components to answering that question or to kind of getting into that topic. As a franchise model with ARCO AM PM, there are certain regulations and standards we have to kind of abide by. For instance, with ARCO AM PM, currently, there's no, they don't accept credit card. So, you know, and I think a lot of these, you know, fueling companies, whether it's ARCO AM PM, Shell, Chevron, I think that's the hope down the road, that there's going to be actual charging stations. So I think that's something, you know, eventually down the pipeline. I think conversions can occur. So it could be that, you know, we have, you know, 18 fueling positions today, and perhaps in the future, you know, technology catches up, and some of those are converted to charging ports. Also, to kind of piggyback on that, we're going to make sure that all of the building, you know, and everything else that's done is by all green standards. So, you know, construction-wise, I know that doesn't really exactly answer that question, but I want you to know that we are, you know, moving forward, you know, in a green manner. A lot of it also, to go back to that specific topic of charging stations, I think a lot of that type of charging where you can pay to charge at the pump, so to speak, the technology just doesn't exist from my understanding. So there's a lot of, there's a prolonged amount of time that the charge needs to occur. So I think as they get better with the way they charge and the battery capabilities of accepting charges, and if they could bring that number down to something that's more comparable to fueling, you know, actually pumping gas- you know, you know, actually pumping gas into your car, which takes minutes, not tens of minutes, then I think we may end up seeing more of that in the future.
If I may interject here, I don't think he was talking about eliminating gas pumps. I think he's talking about providing charging stations. And, and Commissioner Stevens, I'm not trying to step on your thunder here, but the bottom line is, is I really don't care if they take a credit card. The, the impetus from this commission is going to be towards the EV stations. So I, I think you need to give that some consideration. I don't care if it's in the future, they do it right now. We have it all over the place, we have it at City Hall, we have it across the street. So my suggestion would be, and I, it's just my one commissioner's suggestion, that you give some consideration to those stations before we get too far down the road. Just my comment.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Commissioner Stevens, I'm sorry.
Yeah, appreciate it, Mr. Chair, because we, you know, we do have a significant number on the east side down at Second Street. And, you know, as far as, you know, what I looked up, nothing on, on the, on the west side and certainly nothing that far west. And, and there's, you know, that caller mentioned Coachella and Stagecoach. Yeah, they were canceled this year, but next year hopefully, you know, capturing some of that market. And, and to the developer, yeah, right now, you know, yeah, it takes some time to charge. But, you know, but like on Second Street, there's a lot of options to shop and, and capture that sales tax of, of people waiting for their car to charge and having something to eat or shopping and whatnot. So I realize, you know, there's going to be a restaurant, you know, drive-through, you know, whatever, that could capture some of that market, but, you know, that's while you wait, you shop, you know, sort of mentality.
Okay, any other comment? Commissioner Stevens, are you, any other comment?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Collin Dress?
Uh, yeah, I had a few comments, I guess, but I think this is short stat. I know that the, the widening of Oak Valley is that it was a short term in a year from now. What are we looking at as the off, for the off-ramps? Is that like three years, five years? How, how long is that going to take?
Okay, I'm gonna refer to this.
Or do we, do we know?
Let me refer that to the city engineer because he's the one that is dealing with it right now, please.
That's a very difficult question to answer as, as the, the times are changing daily. It, it is our best guess that it is a minimum five years away. But as I stated, that's changing daily and depending how the next few months go, it could be much sooner if there's a infrastructure incentive from, from the federal government that could certainly accelerate it. But as of right now, it's, it's approximately five years-ish.
Did you, did you catch that, Commissioner Collin Dress?
Yes, is there any way that we could, I mean, just as there is a lot of public comments on this, is there any way that we could kind of have a win-win somewhat? Does, you know, I know that they, we're already in a widening a year from now of Oak Valley, but is there anything else that we could do, maybe towards one on-ramp or something? I'm not really sure of what we could do, but just to, so that they know that we, we, we hear their concerns, that we know we, we're not just building something and, and just hoping for the best, but that we're, you know, actually planning ahead, you know?
This is the legal counsel? This is legal counsel to the city, can I speak?
Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Robert Patterson, I'm with the law firm of SBMP, your city attorneys. And I'm attending the meeting like everyone remotely and I'm doing my best to follow the meeting. You know, the sound quality is acceptable. I apologize if I haven't understood everything, but it seems to me there have been a couple different lines of conversation that have occurred. One having to do with requiring the applicant to install, you know, electric charging stations, which of course, we all agree is a great idea. And then the other, I think, that I heard the other commissioner making reference to was, was some kind of road widening. And so I, I just wanted to sort of bring some direction to the discussion because the planning commission is basically looking at certain findings that are required for a, I believe it's a conditional use permit and a, yeah, there's a conditional use permit and there is a plot plan. And so if you look at the staff report, you'll see what those findings are. And the, the job of the planning commission is to determine whether there is substantial evidence to support these findings. And if there is, then the appropriate action would be approval. If there's substantial evidence to the contrary of any of these findings, then, you know, a disapproval finding might be appropriate. The, the idea of putting in electric charging stations or road widening, you know, might be great ideas, but they are, as far as I can tell, not part of the findings that are required here. And they don't suggest evidence that would indicate that these findings cannot be made. So I just kind of wanted to bring everybody back to the fact that, you know, what you should be focusing on here are these various findings. You know, the, for example, under conditional use permit findings, the first finding is, and I won't go over them all because I would be wasting your time, but the proposed use is conditionally permitted within the subject zone and complies with the intent of all applicable provisions of the zoning ordinance. And then number two, the proposed uses would not impair the integrity and character of the zone in which it is located. So those are the areas of jurisdiction that the planning commission has. Again, these are, you know, all interesting subjects, but I, I don't see how they fit into the findings that, that you're mandated to, or, or review, rather. That's the end of my comment.
Thank you. I don't think, I, I think we understand what our job is. Thank you very much. We were just having an open discussion, which we generally do with a developer.
Yeah, and that's fine.
Well, thank you.
That's fine, no problem with that. I, I just wanted to make sure that we're all clear.
Why don't you wait until we make a finding and then tell us if we're right or wrong, okay? Thank you. Now, any other comments from any of the commissioners? Okay, then at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. What time is it, Nicole?
The time is 7:03.
At 7:03, I'm closing the, the public hearing. Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion and I'm going to start down with staff. I'm going to start with Mr. Stee- Commissioner Stevens first. If you don't want to make a motion, that's fine, I'm just going down the roll. Commissioner Stevens, you do not wish to make a motion? Commissioner Smith?
I think that given the discussion that we've had here tonight, you know, the, the primary concern on this seems to be traffic. You know, there's a lot of conditions that the applicant has to jump through in order to open, one of them being installation of traffic signal. If we're in the middle of a capital project, you know, an opening is not going to be able to happen realistically until that traffic signal in the capital project are completed as part of that. But I think that given that that work is imminent in the near term, that work is continuing on with the, with the interchange project, I think that will help to allay a lot of the concerns we have with this. You know, I have seen the overlay that was prepared of the, the interchange plan as well as this project and they seem to line up with each other. The Caltrans encroachment process can be arduous for any applicant that's going through that. You know, so I think that there's a, I, I think there's enough in here to allay a lot of the concerns as far as traffic. You know, as we talked about, I think flood, you know, we're more, more than covered as far as flooding concerns on this. With that, I would make a motion to approve the project as presented.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the project from Commissioner Smith. We'll go to Commissioner St. Martin.
At this time, I'm not going to second it.
Okay, I want to make a statement before we get too far. And I understand what the attorney is saying. The only thing that we're dealing with is actually what's been presented to us. And unless we have an adequate reason that there's a violation of laws, rules, or regulations, we don't have a reason to deny the project. And that's the direction I've received from the attorney before. If we want to add something, we work with the staff on it. So I have a motion from Nathan, from Commissioner Smith. I'm going to go back to Commissioner St. Martin.
Yeah, I said at this time, I'm not going to second it.
Okay. Commissioner Collin Dress?
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Collin Dress. So now, well, that's a real call.
Commissioner St. Martin?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Do you hear me? I said no.
Copy, thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Collin Dress?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Stevens?
Yes.
Chairman Tinker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're, we're done with it, right? Okay, now at this time, this means that our planning director is going to have to get in the act here and we're going to listen for any comments from our community development director. You've hit all night, so let's get with it.
Good evening, everybody, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes.
I'm joining you for purposes of social distancing from my office here in the back of City Hall. So thank you all for joining, our applicants for coming in person via Zoom and for the chairman and commissioners for joining us as you have this evening. I know it's a little challenging still, but things, you seem to be able to get the job done here still. So I appreciate that. I do have a number of comments for you this evening. And I'll start with City Hall reopening. I think it's been out on the website, I think there's been some social media and whatnot. But City Hall is back, not open to the public. A lot of people have returned basically full-time. We have appointments available between the meeting and walk-in also available down at the east end of the building. So it's good to see that we're able to be back serving our residents in person again. Next thing for you, somewhat related to the items tonight, we did receive quite a bit of public comment on this, thanks to the PIO putting out a release on Facebook, talking about the commission meeting and, you know, the project that was coming. Staff is actively working with the PIO and with website management to get the planning projects page fully loaded with all of the projects that we have going right now. So we have on there, I think, three projects that are up now and I think there's eight more that will be coming to either commission and work council in some form or fashion over the next, you know, six months or so. And so we are actively working on getting those uploaded so that we can do something maybe on a weekly or bi-weekly basis through social media and through the city's website for all the residents. So we can encourage the engagement early on in the process and hear these concerns and comments that the residents have and hopefully look to address some of them much earlier in the process as opposed to hearing them, you know, later when we've already finished the analysis of the environmental documents and things like that. So we're actively working on that, I will keep you guys posted on that. Hopefully by our meeting next month, we'll have already seen some social media posts and some activity regarding the planning projects page and the, and the projects that are up on that. So I wanted to let you all know that's happening. And we are also, it's been brought to our attention, maybe it'd be a good idea for us to put together a little FAQ about the development process. So maybe talk about planning process or private land development processes and how that works and then CIP or city-sponsored development projects, which are typically not actual projects, they're more like roads and, you know, things like that. But putting something together like that. So we are looking to do that maybe down the road, but there seems to be some, some interest in the feel that there might be a need for that to be helpful. So if you commissioners have any thoughts or ideas on whether or not you think that's a good idea or other things that you would like to see in addition to the two things that we have actively going right now, as far as website and, and information, feel free to email or call me or Carol directly and we'll make note of it since we know you guys are in communication with the public oftentimes a lot more than we do. Let's see, the general plan update. I should have a hard date for release of the draft document after our meeting tomorrow. And I know Commissioner Smith likes to ask about the general plan update, so I thought I would be to do it tonight. So I will be updating you if I can, if, if you get that hard date tomorrow, I will add it to my update that I typically send out to commission and council and get that out to you guys as soon as I update it, like I said, for council. Let's see, we have the shopping cart ordinance that you guys heard at the last, at the last planning commission meeting is before council. There were some technical issues at the last meeting, so it was continued to the meeting coming up on Tuesday. And we look forward to that moving ahead. And many of the comments that you guys provided were well-received by council, they were incorporated by staff into the final ordinance. So I want to update you on that and let you know that, that we did incorporate those. I believe the, the draft, you can see available, is on the city's website. If you look at the last city council agenda, you can find it there or it'll be up again for next Tuesday. I think that's it for me this evening, nice to see you all. And I'll turn it back over to Chairman Tinker.
Okay, before I, I'm going to end this meeting, I'm going to ask that the city attorney stay online after we close the meeting out, if you would, please. Any other comments, Nicole?
No, sir.
Okay, at, I've got 7:15?
I have 7:13.
All right, at 7:13, I'm going to close the planning commission meeting for Tuesday, July 14th.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
I want to keep the city attorney.
Thank you, bye.